That the council has got with plans of that. And what I will do is make sure that we've got your details. And we will make sure that we find out exactly where we're at and get you the details that you need. And if you don't, then please do get in touch with me. Thank you very much. No, I've got Jay Judge is back. Can you want to try again?
Yeah, I'm just wondering, can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you very much.
Wonderful. Right. I've been fiddling around and finally worked it out. So I'm a small business owner. I have a business on Abbeydale Road. And recently, we've discovered that there are a number of proposed plans that could impede my business. There's been suggestions of double red lines. There's been suggestions of all day bus lanes, all sorts of unusual suggestions that would cause problems for businesses up and down both Abbeydale Road and Ecclesall Road. Now, one thing that does concern me is that there has been no information given, this information I have stumbled across. So there has been no letters sent out to any other businesses or any of the residents of either of those roads. And yet it seems that the progress of these propositions are sort of moving through their stages without proper consultation and without giving us any chance whatsoever to know exactly what's happening. You know, potentially it could put me out of business. If I can't have people parking directly outside my business during working hours, then the business won't be functional, it will fail. So it's a big concern for me. It's a big concern for people on my little parade. We've got a DIY shop next door. And if he can't have people stopping outside his shop to collect doors, then he'll go out of business. So there's a lot, you know, Sheffield City Council as opposed to support small businesses. But this seems against it. So I'm wanting to, you know, the council to discuss this.
Thank you very much for your question. Obviously, the worst thing for businesses is uncertainty. And that's one of the things I suppose that you're really asking for. So I say, I don't know exactly where we are with that. It does sound as if you haven't perhaps received as much information about it as I mean, I I know there's been meetings around and involved various stakeholders. I don't know quite how far they've gone in terms of discussing this. But again, I'm afraid I don't know enough about the detail to give you a
But I have been told to have secured the funding for it, which is worrying.
I said, what will we do? I said, one of my colleagues actually got a hand up. So I'll allow them to. But what I will do is make sure that anything that is an answer tonight, that you get a full answer and make sure that you do get involved in it. So Peter, thank you.
Jay, hi, it's Peter Garbus here. Right, I'm aware you were asking this question and last week we got a sort of a response from, well, it's a good response in the sense that this isn't a proposal as such. It's some ideas that were flying and we wanted some feedback on it. That feedback is still possible to give. I actually believe there's a meeting tonight, which is going on at the same time as this one. So none of, none of the proposals, the red line proposals or the all day bus lanes are proposals that are definitely going to go ahead. They will be, there will be a lot of discussions going on. I'll be able to put you in contact with the various people who are running these discussions and that will help you, I think, understand what's going on a little bit better. That applies to all businesses on Abbeydale and London Road and on Ecclesall Road. So I don't think at the moment there is any chance that those will happen without you being able to have a much, you know, a much needed say in the in the consultation, in the conversation.
I find that a bit worrying that there are parallel meetings as we're having this meeting now going on about the potential changes and yet we don't know about them.
I think the meetings, I only just heard about this meeting yesterday morning. The meeting that was going on for the for the Ecclesall Road and Abbeydale Road proposals. So I don't know how that's been put out. Like I say, I will, I will make sure that you, you do get a chance to to have your say. Because I think it's really important that all businesses up and down those two roads know exactly how they can have their say and make sure that, you know, they are being listened to.
That's important because right now
Contact with the people.
Right now, people are panicking. They really are.
But there's absolutely no need to panic. I will put you in touch with the people who are running this. Douglas Johnson is one of them. So I'll put you in touch with him. Okay?
Thank you.
No problem.
So thank you very much, Peter. Thank you very much, Jay. I don't see any more hands up. I did see a hand up from someone else earlier. But if no one else has got any questions, I will allow you a few seconds to put your hand up if you do. I've got a question from David Bolton.
No, the hand's gone down. Okay, I'm sorry, sorry, my apologies. I was just trying to unmute there. And I apologize, I don't think you've got a picture of me. I'm on a phone. I've struggled with my IT. So I did, I did have a question really. I wanted to ask what if there's any plans to publicize the upcoming changes, which I think I'm correct, coming later this month about prioritization of road users. So the change used to give more priority to pedestrians. I'm, I basically commute by walking at the moment from the Nether Edge area into the city centre normally to get the train. I, 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 one of the reasons for doing that is is because the buses aren't particularly reliable, but the journey, the streets are not particularly pleasant to walk. But I know there are changes in the prioritization coming up. So I guess I'm just interested, is there a plan to publicize that within the Sheffield area? Because it is not something I think most drivers are aware of. So what I'm talking about specifically is priority to pedestrians when you're crossing roads.
Great. Well, thanks very much for that question. It's something very dear to my heart as well. I believe in the Dutch model, I think, which is kind of what we're talking about in terms of priority that was given and the recent changes have come in. I don't know of anything that has been done locally. But again, we will we'll go back to you. Oh, hang on. I've got Council Richard Shaw, who I know is a very keen cyclist. I'm sure he may be able to help us out. Thanks, Rich.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I think Mr Bolton's referring to changes to highway code, which are coming in at the, at the end of this month. Which like clarified things about who has priority when like going ahead at junctions and crossing the roads and so on. I'm aware that the, the council's active travel team have been kind of tweeting about it. And I think they've been putting on Facebook as well, like images illustrating the changes to the highway code. But I think it's probably should be something that maybe Simon and the officers can go back to see if there's any other communications that are going out across the council or the lack.
Thank you. And I guess I'm thinking about things like the the road signs around the, the city that, you know, have been used to publicize things like COVID awareness. I was wondering whether the council thought about using those kind of mechanisms to communicate to drivers because they are effective when you're driving, in my view, as they do attract your attention. So that was one of the things I was wondering about.
Great. So thanks very much. And we shall certainly ask the question. I've got Alexander Tomlinson.
Hi, thank you. I'm sorry, I don't have a question of my own, but you did mention earlier that you had a question about congestion around St James's Retail Park. I was just hoping to hear that question and what else you might have, please.
Okay, yeah, I think what we'll do is we'll draw this as part of the this part of the things to close. And once we've dealt with this. So yeah, I've had a question from Yeah, so it's essentially a question around the queue and traffic and congestion at St James's Retail Park. And the problems with traffic coming to a stand still on bottom parkway. And so the give way around the access road to traffic. And then other issues around traffic from Medahead roundabout, turning right into the access road for the car park, blocking the junction. And generally, the, obviously the increase in congestion is around there. And so we have had a response from Amy. And I think the thing is that obviously the, you know, many members of the public have already been in touch. The local councillors have already actually asking for action around this because, you know, it can be dangerous when the traffic builds up and goes all the way back to the, to the roundabouts. So the actual response from Amy. I'll read the whole, I'll try not to take up too much time. There are a number of reasons for this, like slow recovery of public transport, more spread out periods and more working from home arrangements, all of which compound themselves in great oppressions on main routes like, like the parkway. In this case, one of the main behavioral implications is how people alter their retail habits. So this is having a major impact on all retail locations. And shops like Aldi have grown in popularity and that is what driving the demand and the subsequent question. And there are other factors in the area around the school drop off at Medahead, which anecdotally has more parents doing the school drop off pre pandemic, further adding to the morning peak and afternoon peak. And many parents use St James's Retail Park as the drop off and pick up points and place a greater demand on the junction and the internal roads themselves. In relation to the internal road alignment, the design was approved when the planning permission was granted. The internal road has not been adopted, so it's not a public highway. Means unfortunately that the council has very limited control over the highway design. They do agree that the T junction is a contributor to the congestion. This breaks the flow of traffic and prevents the queue from dispersing easily in the site. They would however like to conclude that they're aware of the problem and are looking at ways in which they can alter the signals at the junction to control this flow. So a number of residents and the bus operators, local councillors have raised the issue. And they're currently looking at funding opportunities to help find a solution. The land itself isn't within the control, but as part of any scheme development. We would engage with the landowners, occupiers and everyone about potential solutions when, when they've got to that position. And so that is the response to the, also the Amy's official response to that. As I say, your local councillors and everyone, I think, will be keeping the pressure up to make sure that something's done about that. And so with that, I'll just So yeah, so now we're on to a report back from the community plan by our South Local Area Manager.
Thanks, Chair. I'll just screenshot just to take you through the presentation that I want to talk you through. So so I'm hoping that's worked and everyone can see that presentation on the screen. So I'm just going to talk you through the engagement that we've done over the last three, well, about four or five months, actually. We started our engagement work back in August and speaking to people. So just as a bit of a recap, this is the area that we cover in the, in the South Lac. So we cover right across from looking across from Low Edges, Baitmore, Jordan Thorpe, across through Green Hill, down to Nether Edge and the Sharrow area, then up Mears Brook, Healy and Gleedless Valley and the bits in between that as well. Also Woodseats and Norton. But we've got a list there of the neighbourhoods we cover. So when we talk about the South Lac, that's the areas we're talking about. So like I say, we started our engagement work back in August and we've done a range of things over, over those few months. So we had an online survey that some of you may have completed. That was online and live from between August and October time. We obviously held our South Lac Public Meeting, which was in Gleedless Valley Methodist Church. We did some drop ins at some of the local libraries. So we just, we just turned up with the team and some of our local councillors. And we just spent some time talking to people who came into the library. Sheffield Equality Partnership have also done some really good work alongside the local area committees, trying to engage a bit more with people who are less likely to have their voices heard. So they've done some targeted engagement work. And we did some work with local, talking to local businesses as well. Unfortunately, we didn't have time to go out into all the business districts in our area, but we did do some work around Sharrow, around London Road and around Woodseats and Gleedless Valley. So we went out with local members, talking to local businesses and just hearing from them really about any issues that they have and how things were going for them as, as local businesses. We did also work with our business, well, Information Officer, Dan Wilkinson, who if you've got any local business owners in the room that you may have met Dan already, Dan works out about in the area supporting businesses largely in the retail and hospitality sector. So we did talk to Dan as well and get some feedback generally about how businesses were, were doing and the conversations he'd been having. And also a really big thank you again to the local community groups who helped us with our engagement activity. So seven of our local voluntary community and faith sector organisations supported us with the engagement work. And they spoke to over 600 and well, six hundred and sixty five people, which was absolutely brilliant. And reached out to people that we wouldn't have necessarily managed to speak to, you know, through our online survey. So they were much more face to face conversations. So a thank you to the organisations who helped us with that. And then linked to this work, there was lots of communication. So you probably did hear from us. We were, you know, we were talking about the engagement work on Facebook and on our social media and on Nextdoor and through our e-bulletins, which we now reach out to over 6,000 people. So we were really trying to, trying to engage as many people as we could. So so far we've spoken to over 1,800 people so far. But the conversations through the local area committees are, you know, ongoing. We want to keep talking to you through these meetings and outside of these meetings as well. So just the bottom, that gives you a sense of where, where the respondents came from. And those stats only really reflect the surveys. But it just gives you a bit of a, a bit of a sense. And there was some, some areas of, you know, underrepresentation, which I'll touch on a little bit at the end. So in terms of who we spoke to, it was a fairly representative sample in some ways. The work that the voluntary sector groups did alongside us really did help in terms of, in terms of diversity and reaching out to groups that we might not have otherwise heard from. And so we had a representative sample in terms of ethnicity, in terms of disability, sexual orientation. And but there were some areas where we're underrepresented. So we had higher than you would expect in terms of people who own their own home and the age range as well. We, we spoke to people an older age bracket. So much lower representation for those who are under twenty and actually under thirty and thirty five. So we know in the future they're target groups we need to look at. So this slide just gives you a bit of a sense of some of the questions that we asked and what the feedback we had. So one of the questions was about how happy people felt with their local area. And seventy one percent of people gave that a four or five, and five was the highest score. So overall, pretty, a pretty positive response in terms of how people were feeling across the area. And the next question was about how people find out about news. And this wasn't so positive, really. We had thirty nine percent of people giving that a four or five. So that was five was, was saying it was pretty easy to find out about community news. So actually, we know that that's, that's a bit of an issue and a bit of a challenge for us. And obviously through the lack, we have got our e-bulletin and there's loads of really great news and bulletins that goes out from organisations in our area. So I think maybe, you know, we need to look at how we as a lack can, can help and contribute to those messages as well. So that's something for us to reflect on. Just to give you a sense then of, of some of the positive things that people spoke to us and the likes, if you like. So the real positives that we heard back from people were around well, this, and this is quite kind of across our area, really. I say our area because I live in the area as well. But about parks and open spaces and about community and business and employment skills were the top three. But I'm going to give you a bit of a sense across the board, really, in terms of some of the things people said. So really positive feedback about a sense of community, over 550 comments from people about their community, about their neighbourhood, about the networks they've got, their friends, their family, and about some of the activities that take place and that sense of community spirit. We also had a lot of comments, over 280 comments about parks. And lots of mentions, you won't be surprised to hear about Graves Park, about Mears Book Park and also Millhouses Park. And also just generally about the environment in terms of trees. So over a hundred comments about trees. People talked, people talked about street trees, but often the comment was just trees, you know, it was one of the things that people really liked about the area. Over seventy comments about people feeling safe in their area and, and having low crime. And the caveat with this data really as well is obviously that, that some things obviously affected some neighbourhoods, you know, more than others. And so it's not, I'm not saying this, this is all across the board of the lack areas. Some, some comments were more reflective of some neighbourhoods than others. But that's something we need to do when we kind of look into the data in more detail over the coming weeks. So some of the other, I won't go through all of these because there's a lot. Some of the other positives were about local shopping centres and business districts. So over 400 people talked about the, the shopping area. They were really positive about the independent shops, the range of shops and the offer. So about the business diversity. Lots of comments about the range of, you know, shops and pubs and cafes. And again, more comments about the local community where people live, about their home and about having access to quiet space and amenities. Fifty people talked about good local schools as well, proximity of schools and the quality of schools. And more comments again about parks and open spaces. So a lot of comments about, about access to green and open spaces, including local woodlands and the countryside. And obviously our proximity to the Peak District came up as well. So then moving on to the, the improvement. So the questions were structured really around, you know, what do you like about your area and what would you like to see improved? So improvements focused around the environment, transport and highways. And there were some comments as well around community safety and crime and also communities and neighbourhoods. But just to give you a bit of a sense then of what people were raising. So with the environment litter was the, was the most prominent issue that people talked about. And there was also some feedback about trees, maintenance, replanting and about street cleaning and maintenance. In terms of transport and highways, we had feedback around parking and traffic calming. They were the two most prominent issues that people talked to us about. Crime and community safety. People talked about crime. There were seventy comments about, about crime being, being, you know, a concern for people and also police presence and patrol. There was over fifty comments around that. And community and neighbourhoods. And again, this is something we need to sort of drill down and just look into a little bit more because I think this is something that may affect, you know, some of our areas more than others. Where there was talking about, you know, lack of local amenities and local facilities. You know, a lack of voluntary community sector to groups and some concerns about, about the local neighbourhood, including housing stock as well. But these were relatively, you know, small figures, really, some of these comments. Parks and open spaces, again, people talked a bit about parks and play areas. But again, we're talking, we're into lower figures here, really, only sort of thirty, thirty comments or so. And business employment and skills. So there was forty comments about sort of the types of business and shops. But I guess, I suppose against the number of people who talked very positively about, about the area, there's that kind of, there's obviously those two sides. Children, young people and families was one of the areas where we got less feedback. And I think that might be reflective of the, the age profile of the people that we spoke to. Obviously, we didn't speak to so many people in the kind of under thirty five bracket. But there was a real pattern in terms of, for the people who did comment under, under that theme, there was a lot of feedback around youth clubs and youth activities and provision for young people. So we had over fifty comments about, about youth provision and about a need for more youth provision and activities for young people. So based on the engagement that we've done, and I say so far, and themes that would be emerging from, from that engagement would be around environment, transport and highways, community safety and crime and communities and neighbourhoods. And to a lesser extent, you know, parks and open spaces and business employment and skills. But the, these are kind of ranked in order of priority in terms of how they've come out from that engagement activity. But just to sort of finish by saying, obviously, there are some caveats, you know, with, with this. And this is the engagement we've done, you know, so far. And it's still, you know, a small sample of the population in the South Lac. And we really do appreciate that. So, you know, it is a small sample. And it's also a snapshot in time, isn't it, of the time that we spoke to people? And the other thing is we know there are some underrepresentation as well within that sample. So we know some neighbourhoods weren't, you know, represented strongly in the sample size and some groups as well. Like I said, you know, people who, who, you know, it was, there was over representation of homeowners within that sample size. There were also some, some gaps in there. And I guess that's always, that can always be the way when you do, when you do, you know, survey in an exercise like this. It was very much structured around how you felt about your area. And so that's maybe drawn out a particular conversation with people where they've thought about their area and their space around, around them. So some things haven't come through. You know, like people, you know, haven't really talked to us about, about poverty and inequality. And maybe some of the issues that might affect them on a personal level. And the other themes that kind of didn't come through as strongly, maybe linked to that, were things like health and wellbeing. And like I said about, you know, children, young people and families. But again, that's potentially a bit reflective of the demographic as well that we spoke to. So we know there are gaps in that. And there was also, like I sort of said, there's some variance in, in, in there as well between neighbourhoods. So overall, when we look at the lack area, then, you know, there was a real strong theme there around, around transport and highways and the environment. But actually, when we, when we break that down and look at the different wards, for example, when we look at particularly for Gleedless Valley, there was much, that was much less of an issue around highways, was much more concerned around, around parks and greens and green spaces and also around, around community and neighbourhoods and facilities. So it is a different picture across our different areas. So what happens next for us? I think we are, the, the lack will be looking at the evidence as well now. So if we wanted to talk to people and get their perspective in terms of how they were feeling about their area, the things they want to talk to us about. But we need, we will also be looking at the data and seeing what sort of picture that presents. And with some of the things in mind there that I've just sort of talked about really around where some of the, the gaps are and some of the, the issues that may not have come through, but we know still are important and an impact on the, on the lack area. So I will finish there, if that's okay. Because I think that's a good place to finish, to sort of take us into the workshops really, because I hope that's given you a little bit of a sense of the, the feedback that we've had. And, and obviously then that sort of is, is why we've kind of, you know, structured the workshops around the themes that we've had really to try and reflect and some of this engagement and also some of the gaps really where we've, where we would like to hear your, your views more. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Diane. And so now we're moving into the breakout discussions rooms. Everyone has been pre-allocated to a group, to a breakout room. For most people, we've been able to put you in the workshops you requested. But for some, we've had to allocate on your behalf. So I apologize if it would not have been your first choice. And the next member from the lack will help to lead and manage each of those discussions. There'll also be one or two supporting officers and a note taker in each group. The main purpose of this session is to hear your views and suggestions. We're very keen to hear as many people as possible within the group. And we politely ask people to try not to dominate the discussion and to know that some contribute. This session will run for an hour. Please don't leave the breakout room until the host brings you back into the main meeting. And then also a host to set up the processes. It may take a few minutes. So please, please do work with us. It may happen quickly, it may not. But we're going now. Thank you very much.
Can I just say that Sally's trying to get back?
I'm here, I'm back.
We got kicked through by mistakes, apologies.
Okay, well, welcome back everyone. Thank you all very much for the first one. If we can just basically, I'm going to go through the six facilitators and ask them to feedback their top two ideas and solutions. So if anyone wants to volunteer to go first.
Shall I go first?
Thank you very much.
Children and young people, yeah.
I'll go second then.
Okay.
Peter was quicker to unmute than me.
Yeah, yeah. Always, always. Right, so we had a really good conversation despite the fact that the group was actually very small indeed. But we had a fantastic conversation and this is about children and young people and about how we provide for them within the LACs area. You know, activities, facilities, et cetera. So one of the things that we noted from Diane's presentation was that we hadn't really heard from young people. So we felt that one of our priorities would be to actually go into schools and talk to young people. If that's at all possible to organise, that would be a really good thing to do. And we also thought that the way that so many people miss so much because there isn't really a way of, a centralised way of telling people what's on. So again, we want to explore ways, this is our second idea, explore ways of making sure that the young people and their parents know what's on. And again, that would probably be through schools, I should imagine, some sort of way of organising notifications to schools through a newsletter or something of that sort. So we want to investigate both of those things and they're both involved going through schools. So yeah, that's, that's our two.
Thank you very much, Peter.
So, Chair, so we were, we were very professional officer member heavy with three, three as it were members of the public community reps in our, our group and, and two of those were wanting to be elsewhere and were eventually allocated to a different group. But nevertheless, we had a very useful discussion and, and I guess two things. It's a bit like Peter's group. Based on our experience this evening and maybe it was because we were all online and some, and many people in our target group might have been digitally excluded, which is an issue. The burning question for us, our top, our top issue was, well, how do we reach out to, to people who are unemployed, lacking in skills, lacking, lacking in access? How do we get close to, close, close to their views? Something to, something to be done there despite offers on the table. And then there was a second issue around volunteering and the opportunities that volunteering offer for, for people from, from all manner of circumstances to, to contribute and also to engage in self-development. But there was a strong representation against, against, you know, this very structured approach that says, well, everybody who in a particular setting must make four steps of progress, of the qualifications ladder. Otherwise, you're not succeeding. So there was a very strong plea for, for volunteering to be linked to personal development as defined by the persons, as it were, involved in the, in the, in the volunteering. And there was also an issue i- in terms of how we, basically how we level, if we, how we level up locally so that, so that there is an offer to, to every, as it were, community in the, in the LAC area with, with deprivation being a, you know, a real, a real problem. That was it, Chair, unless my colleagues think of anything to add. I think I've covered it fairly. Thank you.
That's great. Thank, thank you very much, Ian. Who's next?
I'll go next.
Oh, sorry, I just put the hand up.
Go for it, Kate.
Oh no, don't mind, sorry, let's see, I think we did it at the same time.
Okay. I'll, I'll, my, my group was community and neighbourhoods. We had a really good discussion, really positive discussion about all of the wonderful community groups that we've got in our areas. But what, what we discussed is that it would be a good idea to collate this information. And maybe the LAC could help with collating information either in a data space or using databases that already exist like the Sheffield directory, but also making this really local. So relevant to local community and neighbourhood areas. And then issues around distribution of this information and how people get to know. So it needs to be accessible to everybody. So a lot of information is online, but that's not for everyone. So maybe a leaflet that would reach everyone and that could be through distributed through existing organisations rather than, and sponsored by LACs rather than coming from the LACs because it might encourage more people to engage with it. And maybe posters as well in local areas. And we also had the idea of the TARA's and also local council offices. When new council tenants move into an area, they could distribute information about a local area and how to access support and services. And, and all of this should be including maps, maps of where the physical places are that people can go to, to get information and support. I think that was, unless anyone else wants to add from my group.
With photos.
With photos, yeah, with pictures and photos, yeah. Thanks, thanks Steve.
Thank you very much. Kate wants to go first, then Rich and Paul?
Okay, thank you. And thanks to everybody that contributed to our discussion. And so we were talking about crime and community safety. And obviously it's such a big issue that there's only so much you can touch upon in about half an hour and so on. And so people were sharing with the, with, with us their sort of bad experiences, including they, we've got a big issue across, across the city probably in terms of speeding and, and stuff like that at the moment. And also some issues around antisocial behaviour and, and so on. So the two, I'm just going to be sort of summarised that the, the two big issues that we wanted to sort of feed back was the importance of neighbourhood action groups. The key thing is because local concerns can actually therefore be fed to local police. Then that, that's a really good way of making sure that, that it's all localised. So and obviously that's a key issue for, for, that's the point of why the local area committees have been set up. There are two neighbourhood action groups affectionately known as NAGs in, in the area at the moment. And one's around Jordan Thorpe, no, it's not Jordan, yes, Jordan Thorpe, and the other's in, in Sharrow. So we're still waiting for ours in Glidless Valley. The other issue that came up about speeding was a suggestion was, was about Community Speed Watch. The police can't do it all at the moment and Sally was talking about, Pedley was talking about both their experience of doing Community Speed Watch in Glidless Valley, the TARA, and also an initiative in Derbyshire which involves the community and undertaking speed checks and so on. The police are doing it themselves here, they, they've got an initiative and Community Speed Watch initiative, but that's actually done by the PCSOs and so on. So the, the conclusion of that is that some Community Speed Watch activities would be welcomed in, in this area. And we're going to look into that further. And in particular Inspector Roland Smith is going to be looking at what's happening in Derbyshire. Thank you. Oh, sorry, anything else to add, guys? Okay, thank you for your input.
Great, thank you. Richard?
Thank you. So our workshop was around transport and highways. We focused on active travel, so walking and cycling locally, like within the South Sheffield or, or, or further afield. We had a range of, range of opinions, people with different experiences. So someone who is perfectly happy like cycling on the roads and things that need to just give more, more adults more, more, more cycle training and then through to parents who wouldn't, when they're cycling on the roads with, with their children or alone and that there needs to be more like segregation from, from main traffic. The main themes that were coming up were around pavements, so pavements need more, more cleaning because covered in leaves and other, you know, litter and detritus and being also covered in, in cars. Pavement parking is a big issue and I think there should be more, more enforcement in, in the area. Lack of drop curbs and things for, for accessibility needs looking at. And then the same, the other theme was around helping measures to enable and help children feel safer to cycle around the area, cycle to school and so on. Or, you know, walk to school and it should, you know, involve young people. So yes, some outreach to, to schools and other, other groups to, to do that. And, and one of positives is that they found that, you know, pedestrian crossings and things that we have already, yeah, useful.
Dracking, thanks Paul.
Cheers, Simon. So our breakout room was concerned with the environment and we had a lovely group of like-minded individuals, I must say. The, the topics were very common, that everybody was raising very similar points and had very similar desires for what the local areas ought to be. So I'll try and sum them up. Jason Gallagher had a very nice summary, which I'm already talking, shut up me, carry on. Okay, so there, there was a great desire for more community green spaces, little pocket parks and, and community gardens, more trees, engaging with the community to see what the community wants, what's right for those people in that area and, and getting those green spaces so every community has access to green spaces. In, in general, we want more nature and we want to put the natural environment first in everything that the council does, particularly with planning. And then, and then joining these green spaces up so we, we, we have nature corridors. We have more, more grasslands and wildflower meadows. And more green spaces means more insects and more insects means more birds and so on and on. And we want to get the most from our existing green spaces such as the verges, for example, down there that the Green Hill Parkway through the, the edges. There's possibilities for planting there, which would be wonderful. And, and underused green spaces like fields and, and sports fields that perhaps are not fully utilised could be also used to increase biodiversity. And I think that's a fair representation of what the group said, but if anybody, or Alison, is that fair?
Yeah, I think that that was pretty comprehensive. Thank you, Paul.
Thanks.
Right, thanks, thanks Paul. And, and thanks to, to all facilitators, thanks to all the officers. But most especially, thanks to everyone who's, who's come along from, from members of public and organisations to, to help us hopefully come up with a really community plan. I think that certainly gave us, gave us some great ideas and a good starting place in terms of our next steps. In terms of those next steps, what we'll, we'll be doing is collating all this feedback and, and then collating it with, with the feedback that we've had over, over the past five to six months. Reviewing the available data. I'm sorry, so it's not just going to be about, you know, what the discussions we've had and the things, but we're also going to be looking, you know, where, where we can identify things through, through the sources of data that we've got. And I'd say this isn't the end of the conversation. We'll continue to have conversations over the, over the coming months and to help shape this plan. And obviously some of these ideas, as some of you, we may, may approach it to say, you know, perhaps we can, we can flesh some of these out to, to go into, into that plan. We'll then present our plan for approval by members at the next formal LAC meeting, which will be held in March. We've, we've got Medhead School booked for that, for that meeting already. So we'll hopefully see, meet again in person then. And obviously this will need to be covered in plan, but we hope by then that the situation has improved enough for us to be able to have, have an in-person meeting. It's, it's Wednesday the 16th of March, 6 to 8pm at Medhead School. And I look forward to seeing you there, if not before. Thanks once again to all of you for coming. Thanks very much to the officers who organised this and that put all the work into, in setting this up. Thanks to my colleagues and thanks especially to you, the public. Thank you all very much indeed for coming.
Good night.
Thanks, bye.
Thanks everyone.